So let me go ahead and introduce everyone. We'll start with Kathy Winters. Kathy's an attorney. She's experienced in corporate tax law. She's lived in Newton for 19 years with her husband and her four kids. They've all gone to NPS. And she's held a number of leadership positions in local community organizations. And she serves as the president of the Waban area council. Kathy, thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Rena is to my right. She's a scientist by profession. She was an active NPS parent. She's a community activist. And she's a founding member and current vice president of the Waban area council. Rena, her husband Paul and their three kids have lived in Waban for over 25 years. Finally, the gentleman in the middle, Bill Humphrey. He is a fifth generation Newtonite. So he is very familiar. He's been in digital media and has worked on a number of progressive political campaigns. These are the three candidates. Once again, election day, November 5th. And it would be great if everyone in this room could get 10 more people to turn out and vote. That is the most important thing. Let's start generally. Why don't we start with Kathy? Why Ward councillor? Why not run at large? What drew you to run for the position of representing Ward 5? People who are not familiar, they can vote on all issues, but you are elected only if you are elected by the residents of Ward 5. What drew you to that?
Well, we've been really fortunate in Ward 5 for the past 10 years to be so ably represented by councillor John Rice. John's done a really great job of providing responsive constituent services, of getting things done on behalf of the ward, especially, you know, sort of those small projects that don't get a ton of notice, but are good for the community and improve our everyday lives. I've been involved in the Waban area council for the past five years and worked closely with John. And so when John announced he was going to retire, I thought it was really important that I step up so that we can have a representative who puts constituent services and responsiveness at the heart of her representation.
Thank you so much. And I aired, I should have said that what we are going to do here with this forum is answers are going to be 30 seconds. We can allow for a little bit more. We can, we'll be liberal in the way we deal with this. If someone has a counterpoint, then maybe we'll give them 30 seconds. But generally try to keep your answers as tight as possible, 30 seconds, and we'll move forward. So I would ask you, what is the, we'll go to Bill Humphries. What is the most important role of a ward only councillor?
Well, I think probably most people would agree that the ward councillors are especially able to help with constituent services and constituent questions. It's something that certainly comes up a lot when I'm knocking doors and I'm not already on the council yet. So I can imagine that it's going to be a lot more of that once I am on the council and I'm looking forward to helping people with those day-to-day issues.
Okay, great. Right on the money, 30 seconds. Very good. And Rena, finally, what are one or two of the major issues in brief that Ward 5 is going to be dealing with in the years ahead and currently?
Okay. I think that probably the most impactful sort of issues for Ward 5 are the development proposals, the ones at Northland, that's happening at Northland and at Riverside. And I also believe that it's really important for people to feel as if their voices are being heard by their, you know, by their elected officials.
Okay, very good. And you led me to my next question. And none of you are incumbents, so you can feel free to answer this. Just a point of clarification. A number of incumbents will be up here, but they have been advised by the city law department not to answer specifics about either the Northland proposal or the Riverside proposal because the city council, they're essentially a quasi judicial board and these are ongoing things. So they can't speak to the specifics of those projects, but you guys may. So let me ask you. Kathy, what about 800 units? What they call the Marshall's Plaza and the old Clark shoe, the Northland property at the intersection of Oak and Needham Street. 800 units, okay, sound about right?
Well, you know, I'm not so focused on the number of units, it's the impact on traffic. Like, I think that's the big issue. That and making sure we plan for school enrollment. But on traffic specifically, especially at this stage of the game where, you know, we just recently saw Northland respond to city council president Mark Laredo. Because at the last meeting, he said, "Look, we want you to measure the overall traffic coming in and out of the site." Because Northland has promoted their traffic demand management system as a, as being groundbreaking way to reduce traffic. And I'm not satisfied with the response that they gave this week to that. I think they need to commit to reducing overall traffic coming in and out of the site. So for me, it's more like, it's more about traffic.
Traffic is the big issue.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, Bill, we'll just go right down the line here. What would you do in order to mitigate traffic on Needham Street, which is already viewed by many as being a pretty difficult route to take, especially during rush hour, business hours?
Well, the tough thing is that, as we all know, Needham Street is bad, has been bad for a long time. And anything that gets built on a large empty site like we have at Northland is going to generate some amount of traffic. Then it's just a matter of figuring out what is the best proposal that we can get that will mitigate that traffic. So far, the proposal that's on the table has included a lot of very specific, you know, elements and financing for those mitigation efforts.
Okay. And Rena, let me ask you, your general opinion on this proposal by Northland, which is 800 apartments essentially. Some of them would be restricted, rent restricted for affordability, and the rest retail and commercial. What do you think? What do you make?
Well, my main concern is that Northland complies and is held to a standard in the transit demand management plan that it conditions the build. So that they actually only phase and they get half of the build. And if only in compliance with the conditions, then they will get further permitting for the site. It's a real problem. You know, they have their transit demand management plan right now is not adequate.
Okay. Thanks very much. Let's move on to a different subject area. I think most people here know that Newton has a large billion dollar plus liability in terms of after-employment health insurance, which they call OPEBs, and pensions. Let's start with Kathy. Is the city doing enough? Is the administration doing enough, the council, to address this? There is a plan, but is that enough? And how would you do it differently?
There is a plan, but I'm concerned about the plan. I've talked about this over and over again in these forums, and there's two reasons why. That plan assumes that our investments will grow at a rate of 7.25% per year. That'd be great if we could all get that kind of annual investment return. So that's a concern. The second part of the plan that is concerning is that the contributions are backloaded. Every year, they grow by 9.6%. Historically, our annual tax levy only grows by four and a half percent. So we are very quickly going to see that contribution schedule crowd out other expenses. So I am concerned that under current conditions, we're not going to be able to meet those obligations.
Okay, thanks. Bill, along those same lines, what are your thoughts on the administration's proposal to pay down first, I believe, the pension and then attack the OPEBs? Is it realistic? Would you do something, would you recommend something different?
I think, you know, we have a plan in place to deal with these obligations and we are following the plan right now. Obviously, things, you know, change in real life, especially if there's another recession or something like that. My role as a councillor would be to make sure that if the unforeseen happens, that we continue to meet our obligations and that we don't use those obligations as a pretext to slash essential services either.
Okay. And Rena, let's take a little bit of a different subject matter here. Commercial tax base. And I think this comes into play with the Northland issue as well. Northland is heavy on the residential and not as much as many would think on commercial and retail. What can the city do to increase its commercial tax base and take some of the pressure off of residential taxpayers?
Well, first, not, I think that we pretty much in terms of zoning, need to really think long and hard about giving away or allowing a change of use on a site that predominantly was, is commercial, the Northland site. And I do feel as if it's important for us to think forward because this is a large parcel. And I think of it as being, we only have very few of them. And we need to sort of either consider impact fees or we need a differential tax rate for a large parcel like this.
Okay. Thanks very much. Let's talk about preservation. And there has been a movement to create a Newton Highlands historic district. And historic districts can actually be a little more controversial than one would think on the surface. Kathy, what, in terms of the Newton Highlands historic district, and it's not all of Newton Highlands, it's an area. What is your thought on that? Is this something that's needed?
I think, you know, you need to get the residents to buy into historic district, obviously, because of the restrictions on it. So for any additional proposed historic districts, I would want to see the residents be fully informed and be agreeable to it. But I need to dive back into that question you just asked Rena about increasing our commercial property tax base, because I think it's a really important one. Newton is a bedroom community. 90% of the value of our property is residential, right? So if we want to, we need to maintain our commercial tax base. And increasing it is going to be very difficult, but especially if we do not have control over 40B. It is going to be very difficult to stop developers from proposing purely residential projects. So I think the special permit process, trying to encourage mixed use, at least gets us some commercial in a place that might otherwise go all residential.
What about 40B, Bill? That is very controversial and we've dealt with it here. And we had a whole issue a few years ago where the city claimed that it had met the area 1.5% land mass threshold to be exempt from much of 40B. Number one, did you agree with that calculation when that came out? That was put out by the previous administration, by Cede Warren's administration, number one. And do you see any inherent warts in 40B? Do you like the law the way it is? Do you think it should be changed?
I don't think that we had met our obligation under 40B. I also think that 40B originally was intended not to be used the way it has been used, although it's unsurprising that it has been, which is that it was intended to be a lever. It was intended to, you know, be a threat that would get cities to deal with the affordable housing crisis on their own. And when that didn't happen, we see that this is what we get out of it. It's certainly not my preferred tool. For example, I'm an environmental activist. A lot of the environmental regulations kind of go out the window under 40B. So I would like us to meet our obligations on our own so that that's not on the table.
Very good. And Rena, would you like to respond to what Kathy said about we were getting into building up the commercial tax base and where most of the properties are residential? Did you have a response to that?
Well, I just, we segwayed quite a way, you know. But I'm also concerned that Newton is losing at a pretty rapid rate a change of, a very critical piece of our commercial infrastructure. And I think that that's really tragic, you know. But I'd like to address the 40B because I think 40B and the 1.5 safe harbor would have been, it's a legal standing and it's something that we should have maintained and hold. And we should not have lost our 1.5 safe harbor status.
Okay.
It's a real problem right now in Newton.
Thank you. Let's talk about another, the other issue, right? So we have the density issue, and we also have the McMansion issue, right? We all see it in our neighborhoods. Councillor Sangiolo, several years back, proposed, it was a partial moratorium on teardowns. And obviously, you had smaller homes being replaced by these big, big homes that we see all over the place. Would you support something like that? A partial moratorium or a full moratorium on teardowns as part of a zoning reform?
You know, the problem is since that time, we haven't gotten anywhere on zoning reform. So we do need to tackle this issue. But as we look at it, I mean, we all look around and hate teardowns when we see a beautiful home come down. And for environmental reasons, obviously, it's better if we can keep that structure in place and improve upon it than sort of bring all that embodied carbon out. But we also need to recognize what I said before, that we are, we're a bedroom community where 90% of the value of our property is residential. So when you talk about, and we've touched upon our incredible unfunded pension liabilities, our residential properties, that's our revenue stream, right? So a lot of those teardowns in McMansions that maybe we don't like to look at so much to generate a lot of property taxes.
Okay.
That's not to say I love them, but it's all bouncing. You have to recognize that everything we do involves trade-offs.
All right. I'm going to ask the same question to you. Thoughts on the moratorium on teardowns? Is that fair? Is that fair to a property owner? Would you support something like that or not and why?
Well, the teardowns issue has been a very popular one for voters to bring up when I'm knocking on doors. And it's something I certainly hope to address from an affordability standpoint and an environmental standpoint. I think that a moratorium's not the way to go on that. It's a very blunt instrument that probably wouldn't have the effect we want. I would like to address this through zoning reform, which I'm looking forward to working on next year on the city council when we're doing comprehensive zoning reform. That is, I think, the way to deal with it, and I hope we can get it done quickly.
Rena, go ahead. Same question.
Well, you have to consider what was happening at the time. And I know that Ward 8 and then Ward 5 was second in line in terms of the number of teardowns. Teardowns have a huge impact on a street. It changes the whole context and the fabric of that street and neighborhood. But yes, I would be very supportive of a moratorium because a moratorium, what it does is a pause button. And it actually puts, it's an accelerated track and you address the standards, the dimensional standards that are of issue and problem in the moment. And it's literally short-lived. It's like six months to a year in terms of its full duration.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's talk about the environment. I'll start with Kathy. Is there something that the city could be doing to promote more environmental causes? Or are they doing enough? What is your thought?
Well, I think right now, they're doing a lot in terms of adopting a climate action plan. And I think, you know, it's now going to be up to the city council and the mayor to implement the strategies outlined in the climate action plan. I think the first order of business is to establish the office of an energy concierge, which is recommended in that plan, to help residents transform their homes to become more environmentally sustainable.
And Bill, I know this is a subject that's near and dear to you. What should the city be doing in that area that it is not? Because it is doing a lot.
Yeah, we're doing a lot. We need to do more. That's why I've been endorsed by Sunrise Boston, because that's their whole thing, is we need to be doing more. This is an existential threat and we need to act like it. We need to stop the gas leaks. We need to actually get on a rapid transition off of fossil fuels and help people do that with their homes and businesses. We need to provide that support, but we need to understand the level of urgency that we have and actually treat it like that.
Okay. On a similar question related to this, but on a little bit of a different track, there are some who claim that increased density is favorable to the environment, less pollution because you can limit the amount of cars on the street. Others say no. This, you know, it's the exact opposite. You're bringing in more people. They're going to have cars. They need them, you know? We don't have that great of a public transit here. What is your thought on this?
Well, I think that, you know, it's either you have the cart or the horse first. And I think that it's important to fix the horse. And it's mass transit. And I believe that, you know, we are not like DC. We don't have the required prerequisite of a robust and very sort of substantive mass transit system in place right now. And I think that, you know, we have to sort of build to what we can in terms of capacity of the density of the dwellings being supportive of a, the reverse, the mass transit needs to be supportive of a density that's like a Newton Center or a Waban or a Newton Highlands that can support a density with the transit that's there. But you have, it has to be a really viable transit.
All right. Thank you. Let's talk about that zoning reform, which has been moving along, I guess at a slower rate than many would like to see for several years. What is your opinion of the proposal as it stands now? For example, let me give you specifically, there is a proposal that would create, allow multifamily homes, I think, of under 20, or I'm not sure of the exact number, but smaller multifamily homes in what are now single-family home districts right outside the village centers. Would you support that?
Yeah, I mean, that proposal certainly was adding density and sort of to build on the context of what's there around the village centers. I thought, I'm straining my recollection a little bit because you hit the pause, you know, last spring. I thought it was on the right track insofar as, you know, we had the proposal introduced. It was being vetted out in all the different wards. And I felt like the last, I think they called it like the spring package of revisions, were taking into account many of those concerns that were expressed by residents about maybe it was going to be too much density on their street. It wasn't going to match the existing context. So I was open to that process. I would remain open to it. I think it was on the right track.
Okay. And Bill, moving away from any more responsibility to create more affordable housing around transit villages, Newton Center, Newton Highlands, et cetera, and in allowing by right multifamily homes in these areas that are now restricted to single-family homes. In terms of the businesses that are in Newton Center, that are in Newton Highlands, that we know are really struggling, Lincoln Street, we see business go in and out of business. It's a shame. Would increasing density around these areas help businesses, whether it's Needham Street or Newton Highlands or Newton Center or obviously Washington Place and Austin Street were very controversial a few years ago? What is your thought?
Well, in addition to obviously, you know, various issues surrounding regulations that affect businesses and so forth, and that can be a challenge for them as well, as well as the absentee landlord problem, the biggest challenge, of course, is making sure you have customers and making sure your customers can get to your business. If they're all just driving past your business and never stopping, you're not going to get very much business there. You know, when my grandmother was alive and living in Waban, she would frequently walk up to the businesses from her house in Waban. If more people had that opportunity, I think that would help a lot of the businesses, which is one of the rationales for adding more density, especially around village centers to help those businesses.
Rena, similar, along similar lines, the Northland project. Northland has proposed shuttle buses to offset some of the traffic that would be brought in by bringing in several hundred units to their site. Do you think that's enough to mitigate the traffic there? Or what would you do?
Yeah. Well, I actually want to correct Kathy because what would happen at the end of the zoning reform was that we were looking at increasing the setbacks in the building footprint so that then it would lessen the teardown vulnerability on specific streets. So it was about single-family homes. It wasn't about multifamily units. But with regards to the shuttle bus, I think that, you know, the real problem is, you know, trying to facilitate mass transit and the quickest way we can get people to walk or to bike to mass transit. Because I think of it as being the kind of, or even sort of a mini-rail system, you know, needs to be put in place. It needs to be the linkage to the mass transit system.
Kathy, did you want to respond to that or would you like a new question?
To the question about Northland?
Yeah, about what she was, yeah.
No, I was thinking about what I brought up about the...
Your specific comment about the transit, yeah.
No, I disagree. I think there were changes in that last package that came out that, you know, there was a, I can't remember the exact term, but there was a provision in the first draft that was going to allow more by right multifamily housing based on sort of, you know, the other number of apartment units around them. And it was really confusing to residents and a lot of residents were really concerned about that. And then the, so they were revising that to remove that. So I mean, I disagree. I don't think those revisions only had to do with single-family housing.
All right. All right, let's move on to a new subject. And one of you will be a ward councillor come January, but you do, of course, vote on issues that affect the entire city. So let's start with Bill. Abermarl for the new senior center or multi-generational complex, yes or no?
At the moment, I'm leaning no. I think a lot of people have raised a lot of pretty valid concerns with that specific site. And as a bigger picture issue, I think a lot of people have very serious and reasonable concerns about the process used to arrive at that site. So even if that were the best site in the world, the way that they got to it is pretty concerning and we'd probably have to, you know, jump backward a few steps in the process.
Okay. Rena, but there does seem to be a lot of opposition to this site. And it was sort of withdrawn and then reintroduced, placing the new senior center, a multi-generational community center at Abermarl where the Gath Pool is and those buildings there. Do you like that or is there a better area, do you think?
Yeah, I'm not supportive. And I also feel as if, you know, any sort of taking of either parklands or open spaces is not negotiable. But I also feel as if, you know, I would like to see an opportunity or to give it the time that maybe a private property comes on the market.
Okay. Let's stay with the seniors because so many of our residents are seniors and getting close to becoming senior citizens. What are the biggest, Kathy, the biggest challenges facing people who are maybe 65 and older in Newton? And how would you, as a ward councillor, work to meet some of those challenges for them, to help them?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest challenges is property taxes, right? Which keep going up. I mean, happily, the value of, you know, most of our seniors have been here for a very long time. If they own their own home, they've seen the value of their property grow, you know, a tremendous amount, but they still need somewhere to live, you know? So it's hard to capitalize on that. And then now they're seeing a corresponding increase in their property taxes. So I think that, I mean, there's a lot of challenges facing our seniors, but that's one that we have to be very cognizant of as we face what are some very serious financial concerns we have in the city. We need to keep at the front of our minds that we have seniors for whom property taxes are a real burden.
Okay. Couple of years ago, we had a very hot election issue, which was a charter review that was proposing to eliminate the positions that you guys are running for. 24 city councillors is a lot for a city the size of Newton. Bill, do you support the 24? Would you prefer to see a different model? Tell me, just talk a little bit about the size and the composition of the city council as it is today and how you would like to see it changed or if you like it.
Well, like Ward 5 voters on the whole, I supported the charter reform in 2017. And, you know, it was obviously relatively close, but that was in the direction that they went. I think 12 or 13 sounds like a reasonable number to me. I didn't necessarily agree with every single provision in the charter reform. There are things that I suggested to the commission that I would have done differently, you know, when they were holding their hearings. And I'd still certainly be open to making additional changes, but we'd have to go through a process again. They certainly went through a very exhaustive process.
Let me call you on this. So, and this could, this applied to some other ward races as well, but you're now running for a position that you would have two years ago, I'm assuming you voted to eliminate that position of ward councillor. Square me away with that.
Well, I can't speak to any other races, but Ward 5 voted in favor of the proposed charter reform. I was in favor of it. And I think that it's fair to be represented by, you know, somebody that holds the prevailing opinion in the ward.
Fair. Rena, ideal city council composition, 16?
Okay. What I would like to sort of suggest here is that I'm actually looking at the charter report here, and it seems as if 24 votes is what carried Ward 5, you know, in terms of the difference between the total number of votes. So being representational in terms of 24 votes out of 32, 100 votes is, I think, a far cry.
But what would you like to say?
You know, I'm sort of very, I really appreciate what we have that's so unique here in Newton with ward representation and with 24 representatives. And I think the democracy grows with more voices at the table. But I also feel as if, you know, if in fact, we need to sort of, I'm much more interested in robust community engagement and with the councillors being more engaged with their community.
Let's talk about parking. The city council recently passed a measure that would introduce dynamic pricing for parking that could be as high as $3.75 an hour. Kathy, how would you have voted on that?
Well, one of the things I've done this campaign is I've gone door-to-door to the local businesses of Newton Highlands, Waban and Upper Falls. And I can tell you, in the Highlands in particular, parking is a problem, right? Which is, that's concerning given the number of empty storefronts we have there, that businesses are still complaining that there's not enough employee parking for businesses. So employees are naturally parking on the streets and that's taking up prime spots for customers. And that's really hard on businesses. So the variable rate parking program is meant to try to manage that, to try to incentivize employees to maybe park further away, leave some of the open spaces for the businesses. We all want viable commercial centers. We need to try to help our businesses. That said, that number seems a little high to me for the maximum.
The $3.75?
Yeah, that does. But, look, I'm open to this program. We need to try to help free up parking. We need to try to help free up parking for our businesses.
Bill, how would you have voted on that?
I think I would need a little more specific information on the discussions, which I wasn't, you know, privy to before they arrived at, what they arrived at. I think bigger picture than this specific measure, we're never going to, you know, fix any of our problems with our business community by just having more parking and things like that. Ultimately, it's going to come down to that there are some people in the city who are going to need to park, you know, maybe they can't walk very far or whatever, they're going to need to park right by the businesses. Not everyone is in that position, but until we make safer streets and add walkability and things like that, a lot of people are going to have trouble getting to those businesses without that parking. And that's sort of the big picture behind all of this that results in situations where we're discussing, you know, how high should the parking rates be and things like that.
Okay. I think it is fair to say, as someone who is in Newton Highlands very frequently, the parking situation is worse there than in many other places in the city. What would you do, Rena, to improve upon that? I mean, there's a municipal lot, it's small, and then you have Lincoln Street and what can you do?
Well, I think that, you know, I think possibly like maybe the shared parking pilot program happened like 18 months ago. And I would like to see more of that happening, you know, just in terms of getting the storefront parking slots open and available for people that really need those slots. Because they're usually people that are transiting in and out under a very short duration. But I actually would like to see people out of vehicles, you know, walking more. And we have a very viable walking network in Ward Five through our aqueducts and through our, we've got pretty good streets around our village centers.
Okay. Thank you very much. What about public transit? Is there something that the city could do? I know there have been proposals and pilots that have been done over the years. None of them have been overly successful. Is there something that could be done to connect villages to other villages in terms of public transit on a municipal level? Is there anything that can be done?
Well, first, let me just get back to...
Other than Uber or Lyft?
Yeah, but let me just get back really quickly to the problem of our businesses because I have talked to many of the businesses and they're telling me their customers do not take transit, their employees do not take transit. So we need to be realistic. It'd be great if they did, but let's, we need to help them survive. We have to tackle the parking problem. As for what can we do? I mean, one thing for sure we can do is try to reduce the amount of sort of school-related traffic that we have, which would be a comprehensive transportation plan at the school level and some low-cost after-school transportation alternatives for the many school-aged kids who are very capable of getting around on their own but don't have an option.
Thank you. Bill, what about the overnight parking ban, which has been amended somewhat, but still to many seems to be ludicrous, especially in this day and age of email alerts and, you know, you could have one as needed? What is your thought on the overnight parking ban?
Well, certainly it has been a popular topic for voters to bring up to me when I ask them, what is an issue or concern on your mind in the city? As they'll say, you know, well, the overnight parking ban is either ridiculous or it's too expansive or whatever. You know, I think that there, I'm open to any options that we can explore to revise that or to, you know, roll that back somewhat, but I think there's obviously different contexts in some of the different villages and so on. So we need to, you know, take a close look at that, but I'm definitely willing to continue reexamining that.
All right. And Rena, your thought on that parking ban?
Well, I think that it's important to, you know, consider the safety in terms of, you know, why we put it in place to begin with. But I think on the north side, they're very concerned about the overnight parking ban and I really think we need to listen to those residents.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we are now getting to, all right, go ahead Kathy, I'm going to give you like 20 seconds.
On his face, I totally agree, like the overnight parking ban, it sounds ridiculous. But then when I think about a place like Upper Falls and this development of Northland where, you know, we fought to reduce the amount of parking spots, without an overnight parking ban in place, we're going to have to be very careful about making sure that that development does not result in people from the development parking on the neighboring streets.
All right. Thank you. We are going to get to the portion now where each candidate can ask one other candidate a question, a brief question, not a statement, brief question, and the candidate will have 30 seconds or so to answer it. So let's start with Rena here this time.
Okay, I get to ask my question to Bill. And I know that you've been knocking on a lot of the Ward Five residents' doors as I have and that many of our people are very concerned about what they can do to mitigate climate change and to advance social justice in our community. But I would ask you to reply to the many Ward Five residents who have asked me that they really appreciate the way Newton is now or Ward Five is now.
All right.
With our historic homes, our village center-scale villages and lots of trees and open space. They're doing their share in terms of mitigating climate change, but I would like to ask you, and they're not capable of...
The question, please.
Yeah. Are you supportive of measured redevelopment that fulfills and complies with set standards?
A little hard to figure out the question there, but I think I agree with that probably. I mean, it sounds fairly reasonable to me.
Let me stop for a second. Rena, ask the question in one sentence.
Okay, okay. What I would like to ask you is, you know, rather than being global about climate change mitigation and supportive of something like Northland or Riverside in terms of massive sort of high-density...
Go ahead. The question is...
The high-density builds. Are you supportive of measured redevelopment that fulfills and complies with set standards as infill redevelopments?
Well, I'll say that during the zoning reform process, I'm planning to, you know, try to address some of our environmental goals through the zoning reform process, which maybe gets at that. I think for me, the bigger things are things like, you know, the gas leaks and so forth and making sure that we're not approving new fossil fuel infrastructure, that we're putting in plans into place to help people get off of fossil fuels in their homes and businesses, you know? And certainly, I think we've talked earlier in the debate about the teardowns issue and that that has an environmental consequence as well that we want to try to reduce.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Your turn, one question for one candidate.
For one candidate or for, okay.
One candidate.
Sure. I guess a question for Kathy is, could you explain to, you know, the voters, especially some of the younger voters, how you will handle constituent services in terms of social media rather than some of the more traditional methods of, you know, hearing questions and so forth from people?
Yeah, in fairness, I'm not on Twitter and I don't know if I'm going to become a huge Twitter user. I don't know how great...
I don't blame you.
Yeah, I don't know how good that's been. Look, I'll be responsive by email and phone. I mean, that's, and I will certainly, I think it's been a great development that many of our city councilors and the mayor and the city council itself are now sending out email blasts and I would continue to do that. But mainly just pick up the phone and call me.
All right. And your turn, Kathy, to ask either Bill or Rena a question.
I'll ask Rena a question. Rena, you talked about how, you know, you felt strongly about maintaining ward representation so that the ward had a representative of their own choosing. Yet after being eliminated from the ballot in the preliminary, you continue to run a write-in campaign that's resulting in a three-way race. Here we are, the three of us up again. Given how strongly you feel about ward representation, don't you feel ironic that you're pursuing a strategy that is very likely to result in Ward Five having a representative that is chosen by less than 50% of the vote?
Okay. You know, I think of it as looking at the numbers. And I actually sort of feel as if I actually am, my constituency was very supportive of me doing the write-in. And I would have asked either of you the same question, just in terms of like, if you had lost by such a small percentage of the vote of 17% of our community, would you have gone on to be a writing candidate?
We'll take that as a theoretical question.
Yeah, no, but so what I would suggest to you is that I'm more interested in the fact that we only have 17% of our community as representational in terms of having voted in this race.
All right, I'm going to give you 15 seconds to respond. And Bill, if you want to respond to that same thing, you may also...
We don't have ranked choice voting, which is why we went through that very costly preliminary for the city to get down to two candidates so that we would end up with a representative that is selected by a majority of voters. So I can say with complete certainty, I would have dropped out of the race.
Okay. All right, Bill, do you care to respond?
I certainly wouldn't have done a write-in campaign if I had lost.
All right. That is a concise answer. We're going to get to what I hope are concise closing statements. And Rena, go ahead, 30, 45 seconds or so. We're running a little bit long.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So let me just quickly, all right. Well, I'm very appreciative of being here and my, you know, main position and my point is that I feel as if I want to be representational of the voice of my community. I feel that we have very pressing issues coming in this next term, in this next session of the city council. I am very supportive of resident and citizen engagement in the zoning reform. And I think that everybody needs to be part of this process. So I ask for your support and I ask for your vote on November 5th.
Thanks very much, Rena. Bill, go ahead.
I'm Bill Humphrey. I'm asking for your Ward Five counselor vote on November 5th. I've knocked on 7,800 doors this year and four passes across the ward. I'm endorsed by Sunrise Boston, the Mass Sierra Club, Progressive Newton, the Mass Nurses Association Union, Bay State Stonewall Democrats and Engine Six. And I'm hoping to have your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. And Kathy, finally, your closing remarks.
Sure. I'm running to be the next representative for Ward Five because I believe I can be a strong voice for the ward, an effective leader to move Newton forward. And I will be an independent voice for the ward. I am the only candidate who has not been endorsed by a citywide PAC that's on either side of the yes-no development debate. I will be someone who looks for compromise, I believe very much, in listening to all points of view and in trying to build consensus to move us forward.